This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenley Town Council, and I am calling this special town council meeting to order. It is currently 7:00 PM on May 2nd, 2023. For all call purposes, all council members are in attendance except for Mr. Grandelsky, who is absent with notification. Moving on in the agenda, Item 3, Interviews of Board Commission Applicants. We have none this evening. We'll move on to Item 4, Citizen Statements and Petitions. Ms. Clorio, did we have anything submitted?
We did not receive any statements.
Thank you. If anyone would like to come up and speak, now would be the time to do it. You can come up, state your name and address. We just ask you to keep any comments relevant to items that are on this evening's agenda. Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we will move on. Item 5, Old Business. We have none this evening. We'll move on to Item 6, New Business. Consideration and Action on a Resolution Confirming the Appointment of April Lamoth as Revenue Collector.
Do you want to take your, get your motion on the floor first?
I will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Ms. Wakefield, seconded by Mr. Wood. Ms. Clorio, if you could go over this.
So I'll actually introduce April. If April, you want to come up to the table right up here in the front. So as you're aware, the, our revenue collector of 43 years, Pat Monahan, just retired last week. We began, we began the application recruitment process back in March, knowing of Pat's impending retirement. As you're well aware, our revenue collector position is a very pivotal position for the town as a department head. So we didn't, especially coming close to the start of a new fiscal year, a new tax collection process, it was important to get that position onboarded as quickly as possible. We had six applicants, three of which were current certified revenue collectors, performing revenue collection duties in various towns. I had an interview panel of myself, our finance director, who also partly oversees the finance office, and as my expert in the field, I had Melissa Alden, who is Putnam's revenue collector. And so having previously worked in Putnam, I'm very well aware of Missy's work ethic and, and expectations, but also I know that she is very well respected in the Wyndham Talland and State of Connecticut Revenue Collection Association. So she is very well respected. So I really respected her opinion in evaluation of the candidates. We interviewed three candidates, April being one of them, and the interview committee unanimously selected April. April's been currently serving since January as an assistant revenue collector for the town, and has been performing outstandingly during those months. She has had the benefit and opportunity of having a lot of information downloaded to her in a very short period of time from our, our also former assistant revenue collector, who also worked for the town for 43 years, and our revenue collector. So she's had an opportunity to really get several months of download. But I will, you know, let her speak to her resume, but she has worked in revenue collection for, you know, seven years. So she has a, a really good basis. She's a certified revenue collector. So we, I highly recommended her for the position. So she is my selected appointment for this position. I did bring her before the Personnel Subcommittee of the Town Council. What was that? Not last week. I can't remember the date now. Was it last week? Seems like so long ago. And so the Personnel Subcommittee did get an opportunity to also interview April, and they unanimously recommended her appointment for approval to the Town Council. So I, you know, introduce April to you and hope that you will support her appointment.
Thank you. April, it's great to see you again. For those of us here who weren't at the Personnel Subcommittee meeting, can you just tell us a little bit about yourself, your background?
So I worked in the town of Brooklyn for eight and a half years. I received my certification for tax collecting in 2017. And I've, the next step for tax collectors is recertification. So I've already met all my hours for that. So, and I'm not supposed to be recertified until the end of next year. So I'm already on top of that. And I have gone through revows with Brooklyn, so I know what to expect for next year, what that's coming through. So I've had, it'll be almost nine years this May that I'll be working within the tax world.
Thank you. Any questions from council members? Mr. Wood?
This was one I didn't think of in Personnel Subcommittee, but Mary's kind of mentioned 43 years, not twice. So where do you see yourself in 43 years?
Isn't that a little unfair? I don't know that I could see myself in 43 years.
Either possibly here or retired, depending on what that age brings me to.
I think that's fair.
Thank you.
I would say welcome. And how has the learning curve been with two ladies that have worked over 40 years? Do you think you're ready to just take off?
It's been amazing difference between Brooklyn and Killenley, just because the population is pretty much doubled from Brooklyn, so.
Yeah, he's going to see the volume too.
That has been a learning curve just in itself of, things are similar and yet different for the way that you follow all the same statutes, but every office has their different procedures. So by learning from Linda and Pat has definitely set me up ready to go forward from this point. And it's like they imparted all their wisdom on me. Got really downloaded on the information, and I have so many notes from them. And they both reached, told me that if I have questions, I can reach out to them. I also know I can reach out to my Wyndham Talland community, so I can have, ask them questions and get feedback from other collectors in this region.
Yep. Well, it sounds like you had very experienced and well, people that have been doing this for a long time. And I applaud you, Mary, for hiring from within, and Killenley's growing, so. Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
One real question I actually have. I'm thinking about it. You know, this office is going to be, we're going to, you're going to need some assistance there. So until you get that assistance, how are you looking at overcoming some of those challenges?
So we are going to be sending delinquent taxpayers to our collection agency. So that is going to take a little bit of the workload off of us. So the collection agency will be helping to collect on those back taxes. So it's just that, a little bit less that we're going to have to focus on. So we're planning on sending them towards the end of the month to collections. And then we're also going to be doing a tax sale, so that will be also some of those sent out to the attorneys. So those are kind of, are going to help negotiate a little bit of less work for us because we're going to be using our tools in order to increase our collections.
For those at home too there that might be listening, that's actually something we normally do.
Yes.
This is just outsourcing work for the sake of outsourcing work. This is something we do annually.
Right. This is part of our normal process. We normally send our delinquent taxpayers around this time anyway out to collection agency. And we do an annual, we usually do annual tax sales. So those are, those are again, normal procedures. You know, pending her appointment tonight, if this is approved, then I will proceed immediately with the posting of the assistant revenue collector. So we begin, we can begin that process and hopefully get that position filled in a relatively quick order. And then that will help get them set up for, you know, the start of the new fiscal year. It does leave still one, one remaining position for us to fill. Our thought, our, our process is to fill one and then fill the next one, right? So we want to make sure that we're filling for the skillsets that we need for the way April is intending on organizing her department and her office, right? So this is really giving her that opportunity to really structure that and really meet the needs of what needs to be in the department without, you know, everybody has their strengths and weaknesses, and you fill those positions in order to have that full, robust team.
Mary, do you see, how, how far out do you see hiring April in the system? Are you going to put something out right away?
Yeah.
Do you see any challenges to getting someone? You know, how hard it is to hire people right now too.
Yeah, so it's really going to depend on, you know, at what threshold we're looking for. You know, if we're looking for another certified revenue collector, that may make it a little bit more challenging. We may look for somebody that's in that certification process, which will probably make that, make that easier, but also still make the transition easier. So April's not having to train somebody from ground zero, right? So my hope is that we'll be onboarding somebody, you know, really, you know, towards the end of May, maybe beginning of June, right? So I intend that if it's approved tonight, I have the posting essentially pretty close to ready to go. We get that up, you know, before the end of this week, that position opens. We will accept applications for probably, you know, 10-day time period. See what we have at that point in time. If we feel we need to extend that application period, we will do so. We don't hire people just to hire people. We don't hire warm bodies. We, we need to hire the talent that we need to have. And sometimes it makes sense to wait a little bit of time until you really get, you know, quality candidates in the door and set that department up for success. So yes, the next couple of months are going to be a bit bumpy. April and I have talked about that, and we've talked about how, you know, we may be able to provide some added assistance to some of the more routine tasks that will help alleviate some of that. But they will have to, you know, as with any office that's re, that's kind of rebuilding, there is going to be some catch-up work to get done, right? There's, and, and we're going to respectfully be requesting taxpayers to, you know, be a bit patient. You know, when you, when you call in and you get the voicemail, leave a message. Because they're probably on the call or they're at the counter with another, with another customer at the time. So, you know, just leave a message. They will get back to everyone. They're very diligent about doing that. But just be a little patient. But I, my hope is that we'll be kind of full steam, full, fully operational or fully. Staffed, that's the word. I couldn't come up with the name. Fully staffed by the beginning of July is really what I'm hoping to be able to have. You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further comments? Ms. Wakefield?
I shared this in Personnel Sub, and I've known April for a very, very long time. She was one of the Girl Scouts when I was a Girl Scout leader, and she was one of the older girls. But, but yeah, it makes me feel very, 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 very old to be hiring a professional. And so I know April worked at our library for a while. She, she knows municipal, and she's, you know, she's, she's a very, she's got good work ethic, and I think she's going to be a great fit for Killenley.
Thank you. Any further comments? April, would you like to add anything?
Just to mention to the public, if they're listening, if you do have outstanding taxes, if you want to, please give us a call. We can set up payment agreements with you to keep you out of collections. So we don't want to send you to collections, so please give us a call.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. And thank you for, for supporting that appointment. Thank you, April.
Thank you.
We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is 6B, New Business, Meeting with Housing Authority and Staff Liaison, Mary Braun.
Hi. The Three Stooges.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi there.
Hello.
Looks as though. Green light.
Well, I'm Dave Smith. I'm the Chairman of the Housing Authority Board.
I'm Brian Tavilia, part of the board as well.
I'm Carol Green. I'm the Director of the Housing Authority.
Mary Braun's in the back.
She won't come up there.
Well, she could always take Ed's seat.
I think you should make her. Jason, pull her up there.
Whoa.
The last time we were here, we asked for some contact with the council to have the liaison. I just want to recognize Ula as picking that baton up and doing a great job. She's there virtually every meeting and reports to us what's going on in the town. And I think maybe Ova does more than she needs to. I know, I learn more about the town from Ova than I do John Penny. Carol, why don't you?
Well, I think that probably the last time that we came here, Jason, you were a council member, I believe, weren't you, at that time? And it seemed as if we taught everyone quite a bit. No one knew what we did over there on Maple Street and the end of Connecticut Mills Avenue. We're still there. We're still trying to keep everything together. The buildings are getting older. We're having a lot of, of problems mechanically with the congregate building. It was built and started in 1993, and I was just letting Brian and David know that the walk-in freezer, the condenser and compressor went today for the $2,009,500, which they replaced only to find that it was defective from the factory. So we're putting all of our frozen food in refrigerators that we have available, that we had bought new for replacements. So we're struggling that way. And I think eventually, last time, we had talked about Birchwood Terrace. And Birchwood Terrace has not been touched since, I'm talking as far as updating, since 2001. Mary had just come to town, I believe. Was it Mary? 2001 and 2. And we did an expansion over there, all of those apartments. There were 40 apartments, 30 of which were approximately 420-some square feet. So they were bumped out 10 feet in that expansion. The contractor left a lot to be desired. We have problems with the flooring. We have floors that kind of meet this way instead of being straight. So we have tried to get grant money. Mary has been very, very helpful. And she has completed the grant applications for small cities on two separate occasions. But it appears that the powers that be like to fund some of the shoreline properties. And so we were left out. And the whole problem is that in order to complete the application, we have to have plans and specs. We have to have the architect. You have to put out a lot of money, which, which has probably been 50, $60,000 each trip, and only to find that you're rejected. Or they won't tell you you're rejected, but you were not given a grant. And that money is gone. And we just can't do that. We can't repeatedly do that. But we're hoping that eventually we will be able to get something and work on our Birchwood Terrace project. The Maple Courts, there have been expansions there in some of those small apartments. They're very, very, they're lovely. They really are. They have the vaulted ceilings, and they're now almost 700 square feet. So people seem to still want to be there. And I've come to the conclusion that the reason we're so popular is because we allow pets. We have more dogs in our complex than you're doing the whole town. But nonetheless, we're doing fine. We're keeping our head above water. When we don't, we'll come to you and we'll be crying. So do you have any questions of us?
I will open up to council members. Mr. Wood?
So having worked on the ambulance for many years here.
I know, I've seen you, right? Many, many times. I don't know if you were there the day that I had someone pass in my office.
No, I was not there for that.
That was very upsetting.
Yeah, well, understandable. The one thing I know I asked last time, I think, which was pre-COVID when you guys were here, was for some numbers on the side of the main building over at Maple Courts there to, especially for, I know KB's had a large turnover of employees over the last few years, to state where the lower apartments, what those numbers are as opposed to the upper apartments there.
You mean in the congregate?
Yeah, in the congregate.
In the congregate.
Yeah, just outside of the building so that way there, it can, makes it easier for first responders to say, oh, apartments, you know, 80-something through 90 down here.
Yes.
Whereas the rest of them are all upstairs.
Yes. There's, there have been labeling of different wings too, in accordance with the fire department. And so some of that, as you enter, you will see the, the labeling of those wings. To be able to number the apartments on the outside, no, we have not done that. I really, to be very honest with you, I wasn't aware that that had been a request, and I don't know who it was aimed at when that happened. But if that is an issue, we'll take care of that.
Ms. Clorio, I have one question. Do we have money in this year's Public Safety Commission budget? And could that be used for that?
So the Public Safety Commission, there is, I want to say $500 in that. And as you're aware, the Public Safety Commission doesn't currently have a quorum. It's supposed to, we could, we could look at what that cost is, so I can work with Carol and find out if that's an opportunity, and I can report back to the council on that. I, I did have a question. What is your current waitlist in order to?
As of today, I believe in the cottages, we just, we have a lottery drawing every three months. We collect applications. And this is the state's way of doing things, so that they feel it's, it is the most fair way. If we were to take an application in and on the date that you received it, place them on the waiting list, they're not in favor of that. But as of today, I probably have 240 for the cottages. The congregate, we're well over 120. So, you know, it's pretty obvious that there's a need. There's a need. I, I feel very, very bad because the Town Council years ago created this housing for their seniors. And then, of course, the State of Connecticut opened it up to be for the young disabled, which I realize they need a place also. But when almost one-third of your waiting list consists of younger people, it just seems as if there is a need for two different types of housing out there, to have your seniors and to have the younger disabled. And I don't believe that they are always very happy in the atmosphere that they're placed when they come to senior housing. If you're 32 and you're, all of your neighbors are in their 80s or what have you, it's not conducive to your way of living. So that is something that we deal with, and it works. It does work, but not ideally. As far as for our apartment numbering, we only have the two entrances that the people, you come in, that front door. And in that situation, it would only be that we would have to number at that front door that it would be the first and second floor. Whereas the back entrance is basically only for eight apartments. It would be the lower numbers.
I just remember working there for eleven and a half years. I still couldn't remember what numbers were. To be fair. But yeah, that was, I know I had asked at the last time you folks were here, and I know you get caught with many other things too, so understandable.
No. People that work there, they can be there for two months before they're not getting lost somewhere. It's a difficult.
The thing about the waiting list though, is that people can be on multiple waiting lists. So that doesn't mean that there are 200 people in town waiting, because they could be from.
All over.
All over. Still, the waiting list is, you know.
It's extensive.
Points to a need.
When I tell them that we have at least a two-and-a-half to three-year wait, you know, there are many people that are never going to make it.
Yeah.
They're not going to make it. So it's upsetting.
Ms. Clorio?
Just as a quick question, when an apartment vacates, how long does it take you to turn that apartment around and, and refill it?
Approximately four to six weeks.
Four to six, okay.
Many of them, when they're vacated, are in decent shape. But then, of course, you have the ones that you're going from floor to ceiling, you're going to remove walls.
Back to the signage, and when I was doing home care.
Yes.
I got the same thing. I mean, and it's almost like, because as you're driving in, you really need to be able to drive down to that area. Almost like you, almost like you would need like a parking, almost like a parking sign saying apartments X, Y, and Z, or.
Yeah.
And with an arrow going forward.
It is, it is difficult.
I mean, and, and we do make our own signs, so I mean, that could be.
We'll, we'll work together. I promise. We'll work together. It may not need necessarily, we, I think we can work together on something. Because I'm, I'm thinking, what I, what I'm gathering is you need driving directional signs within the drive or parking area in order to be able to direct them to the right entrance.
Right, yeah. You're pulling in with either, you know, your home care or first responders pulling in. We're looking at the building, and when you, I look in the very front of the building, I see apartments 89 through 100, and I can't remember how high it goes up to. But, um, so I was like, oh, okay, but then 89 is actually down below.
You need to tell it to go down.
We need a sign that says, you know, these apartments are down here, these apartments are up here.
Yeah, got it. I think we can come up with something pretty easily. We, we'll work together.
I trust Carol.
The Marys will get together with the Carol.
That's a good thing. That's a good thing.
And I do, I have to say, my experience on the board, it's just every time we have a meeting, it's amazing what Carol does. It's just not, I, I can't imagine having to do everything. When I walk in and I see her at the typewriter, I know it's business.
They love it.
But it works.
Because I still have a typewriter in the other room.
It works. But it's amazing, and we're lucky to have a director like Carol. It's wonderful. It's great.
I'll be like Pat Monahan, I'm closing in on the 40.
No, 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 no.
And I'll extend that. We have, I'm really happy that we're getting more and more people to come to our meetings, the board meeting.
Yeah.
You hit the hot spot, but.
Yeah, you, you landed a good one.
Yeah, you got, uh, but when they have complaints, they're comfortable in coming and talking to us about the complaints that they have, and we address it. And by the way, the food service has changed.
So we upgraded.
We have a, a bridge to a new, and then we have the same, we're going to have the same food service as the school system.
Which is.
So. I, I endured a lunch there one day. But the whole staff, people will come in and, and they rave about the guys that work in, on the, in the area. The ones that clean.
Yeah.
And you know the, the old stories about the mailman who identifies when somebody is in stress at their house? These, the guys that work there are those that.
Yeah.
They know everybody, and everybody knows them. They're invaluable.
Yeah, Jason's been great too, stepping up.
He has. He's has.
He really is a well-oiled machine.
And the maintenance men, I mean, they're very tolerant. And it's, it's amazing, some of the calls and the work orders we have and what they endure. You have to give them credit. You really have to give them credit.
And they drive the trucks until the doors fall off.
And we don't get paid very much either.
Yeah, no. That, they run that equipment long.
Yep.
It's great.
Yeah, we, we just had to replace a truck, and they drove to Lester, Mass. to find the truck that they could get at the price. That they're, they're really, we're very, very fortunate.
Yeah.
Now, you talked about a board that didn't have quorum. We have a little bit of a problem there. We have two others that are on, and we have, we allocated for, then we need five, and we need one more.
We need five.
So.
And we have two that have been expired, one since a year ago, this past December, and the other December of this, just the past year, yeah. So I don't know, probably no one wants to come on our board, yeah.
Well, and so the ones that have, the ones as they're coming up for expiration, we do send them notification on the town side and say, you know, it's time for you to renew. Are you interested in that? I think one of yours is still kind of unsure.
One of them never received a letter.
Oh, I'll have to check on that.
And the other one did receive a letter and never responded.
We've been going back and forth with one of them for a while now. So.
It's a little.
Yeah.
It's a tricky situation for one of them.
Correct.
But the, the other one is. It's a little, it's, it's a tricky situation for one of them, but the, uh, the other one is our resident commissioner. And he did not receive a letter.
I'll double check on that.
Okay, thanks Mary.
Yep.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Wood?
Early, it's time for me to wake up.
Glad I wasn't the only one.
Y'all know how I wake up every morning. So the, not to really belabor the waitlist much longer here, but, um, is it typical to have this many applicants in this long wait period? I, I feel like those numbers have, I've heard those numbers before.
It's typical. Most any of the various facilities in our area, as David mentioned, they're running long waitlists too. And the sad thing of it is you can't apply until you are qualified. You have to be the certain age or on disability. And most people don't think of this until they have some type of a situation in their lives, uh, passing of a spouse or having to sell their property. And of course they call up and, you know, do you have any apartments available? And it's a rude awakening when they've got a house on the market that they're going to have a closing and are telling them that they're going to have to be out if they have the closing within thirty days, but they can't get a place for two and a half years. So, I get many, many calls, many frantic calls, especially now with Seven Hills buying up everything in town and the rents going up, that, excuse me, that they're going to be evicted and what can we do for them? And we do not have preferences, we haven't been allowed to have preferences. And actually, almost every person on that waitlist, if you go through it, there's a story behind every one of them. So which preference would you acknowledge? So we stand by the waitlist, have to, I have to. And it's sad, it's sad.
But on the other side, the flip side of that is that you do notify everybody annually.
Yes, I do.
And there's a lot of them don't respond, they're.
Yeah.
They, so the, the list does get culled down.
But then it goes, then it goes right back up.
Um, many people, we, we mail out, we tell everyone when they submit an application, it's in the paperwork, to please notify any change of address. But of course, there are a lot of people that are couch surfing and they're changing their address, probably like we change our underwear. And so when I start sending all of those things out, I don't get responses and we used to send a second mailing and we have been informed that we didn't have to do that, that one's sufficient. So when anything comes back with an address that is not current, I mean, they will forward. But after six months, if they put the address on, I will resend it. And, but we usually lose approximately one-third of the people that are on the waiting list when we send that out. And that's upsetting for them when you start, uh, you're going on and first thing you know, you get a call from one of those people that never responded, had moved and you're telling them, I'm sorry, I had to take you off the waiting list, so. You know, it's, it's not a great system, but it's the only one we have.
No, I have a question, as far as when you're notifying people that are on the waitlist, um, is there a way you could read, like when you're sending them a mailing, send them an email at the same time? Um, that way, in case someone has moved but they still have access to their email?
I telephone frequently.
Okay, alright.
I don't just do it.
Okay.
I, I'm soft and, um, I do, I, I start looking at their application and I have called relatives and asked if they have another telephone number or an address for them. So I don't just say, you're gone, I don't do that. But it would be, probably be a lot easier to email and.
Yeah.
And the typewriter.
Things loud.
That they love that, they love.
It works.
It does.
If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
It's easy to fill out a form on a typewriter there and, on the computer.
I will say about the board that you've provided is, you know, we have Brian here who has, uh, nursing information or background. And, uh, Pat who isn't here is also, uh, has experience with being a, a director of a housing authority in Massachusetts. So she has a good deal of depth of knowledge and understanding. And then we have the resident, um, who has an understanding from that perspective. So I think the board, as we have it, is pretty balanced and I'm your general information guy.
He's, I check his mental status every meeting and he's, still with it, yeah, little mini mentals.
So again, I think the board we have is really good for, for the purpose. And as we said before, Carol does a great job, we come to the meeting, it's all prepared, we have an agenda and, uh, so.
And I will also, seeing everyone's being so complimentary, this is the best board I've ever worked with seriously.
Wow.
It is.
Okay.
It, it's, it's been tough for a lot of years, um, especially with some of the people that we've had that had no experience, no, no understanding of budgets and, and that's my big thing. I love numbers and these guys do a great job with it. Thank you. Find us some more.
Yeah.
We need a couple.
We'll work on it. Alright, um, anything further from council members?
Yeah, so I just have, I just have a compliment. My mom was there, it's kind of surreal, it's almost a year she's been going Charlotte Lara.
Oh, yeah.
Charlotte and Sissy.
Was a sweetie. Sissy, that, that baby, I could have taken her home.
When you said the dogs, Mom and Sissy popped into my head.
Oh, yeah.
But I, thank you so much because she was there a while and after, she loves Pep, I mean, it was such a nice community and she kind of stuck to herself, but I knew she was in good hands and I knew she was in a good place.
She was a wonderful lady.
You guys do a great job.
Well, we try hard, thank you.
And is there anything, I'm asking like a technical legal, is there anything we can do as a town council to support them more? Like out of the box, or are there some other different things we can do?
Yeah, so, you know, one of the things that, you know, going forward with especially grants, those capital projects, those I think are the heavy, heaviest lifts for them. Um, is, you know, you know, we, uh, you know, working with our legislators to try and help, um, get, uh, funding for them is going to be key, um, for them to be able to get capital projects moving forward. Um, you know, potentially down the road, maybe there's an opportunity for the town to give some sort of assistance with funding for design or implementation or something like that. Um, we do have in our budget that we, you know, we do assist with regards to delaying impacts on the, um, on the sewer bill. So, um, we pay the current sewer, sewer bill, um, they pay the previous year, so they have a whole year in planning to be able to, um, smoothen those increases on the, on the sewer side, right? So, um, we, we work with them on that. Um, so yeah, as opportunities may arise, I'll definitely bring them to the council's attention on how we might be able to, um, work with them. But clearly, you know, you, you have a full capacity, um, you're at full capacity there and, you know, unless the town wants to look at eventually taking on, you know, construction of new facilities, that would be, you know, a, a heavy lift. But that would be another thing, because that's what the, the council did, it, the council was the one that moved forward the initial instantly, the initial build project. So, um, if the council wanted to look in long-term strategic planning of where another facility might be able to be located and work towards those, that would be another way to help, um, right, to be able to provide additional housing. That would be a, an avenue for the town to look at as well.
Well, what I was thinking of, so we get our binder every year with all the human services, like all the asks.
Yep.
I was just wondering like if.
Housing Authority is in there.
Oh, it is.
It's in there for the, we do the sewer, it's the sewer piece back and forth, yeah. So I'll work with them.
Specific to sewer, but we could ask for more funding.
But with the sewer, we are paying it.
Right, it's a year delay.
We have to, our budget, they're so strict with our budget and we just cannot predict what the budget is going to be for that year. So they have allowed us to be one year in arrears, basically.
Yeah, well, what I'm referring to is there's a lot of organizations in town that, that ask for my pro capita money, we pay, you know, different, and I just don't understand why you're not on that list.
Well, I will say this, it's just been my experience in, in the brief time I've been on the board, the town has been super supportive and, and helpful as a resource. When, when Carol needs somebody to help with grants or just needs to ask the town lawyer for support, like, the town has always been super responsive in a lot of areas. And so I think, uh, what I've learned is that this commissioner, this committee is very isolated, it's siloed kind of from the town per se. But when we do need things, it is you guys, the town is always there to help us navigate. And, and how you do that is nothing short of a miracle, because it is, it's just, I, when I came on, there was a gutter issue, a gutter project, and that gutter project lasted roof, roof and gutter, excuse me. Yeah, so it's like, yeah.
We killed him.
Yeah, he literally, uh, yeah, so, you know, don't do gutters at the housing authority, but, um, so it. It's, um, but it is great, it's, it's a weird relationship, but we're, whenever, since being on board, whenever we've needed any sort of help, Carol is not afraid to come to the town and everything has been helpful.
Matt at the town garage, he's very helpful too, and I mean, just so that you don't feel as if they've turned their backs on us.
Yeah.
We, we run municipal plates on our three old trucks.
And you, and you fuel, you fuel with us as well to be able to provide that saving. So there's a number of resources that they activate, um, without necessarily, you know, giving a direct subsidy. But we do have a lot of, um, interaction between the two. You're, um, they're, they benefit from, um, utilizing the town's group health insurance. So they're able to, their employees take advantage of that group, group health insurance, which otherwise, if they were standalone, they would be paying far more for that health insurance, so they're able to, you know, maximize that benefit to their employees, but also minimize the cost to that. So there's a lot of the, that type of relationship between the housing authority and, without doing a direct payment subsidy. Um, we help, help them maximize resource.
Okay, well, I just, I'm happy to hear that.
Yeah. Thank you for reminding me on some of those.
Thanks, buddy, thank you.
Anything further? Seeing nothing further, um, just want to thank you for coming forward, thank you for all the work you do serving our community. Absolutely, thank you.
Very much, thanks for your help.
Have a good night. You too. We'll now move on to the agenda, next item up is six C, new business, presentation of Water Pollution Control Authority fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
So he does have a PowerPoint presentation, but I also wanted to make sure you have the actual budget pages in front of you as well, in case you want to write things down or mark it up, you can do that as well.
Welcome.
Yes, good evening all.
Good evening.
Alright, uh, thank you for taking the time to hear the, uh, Water Pollution Control Authority, uh, proposed budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, for those of you that don't know me, my name is Dave Capascioni, I work in the engineering department. And joining us tonight is Patrick McLaughlin, the chairman of the, uh, WPCA. And, uh, on the slide, on the screen is a overview of the, uh, WPCA expenditures. Uh, the top section, the personnel, is the, uh, plant staff. And then it goes down through, uh, different services, uh, you know, print and advertising, all that type of, uh, day-to-day expenditures. Uh, into contractual services, which is, uh, currently has built into it. Our sludge disposal and, uh, trucking with, uh, HI stone to get it to the MDC for incineration. The contractual services office is the, uh, town staff that is charged the WPCA budget. The M and A is, um, materials and equipment. Yeah, and we have the, uh, line item for sewer line maintenance and professional services has our, uh, potential legal expenses, our IT department, uh, our SCADA system and things of that that we need to bring in outside vendors for. Uh, data processing, uh, for the revenue and the bills that are sent out for the sewer use fees. Um, kind of new to this year's budget is, uh, break out more of our utilities since the town had taken the, uh, facility over as of July first of last year. So we have, uh, electricity broken out, uh, heat and fuel for natural gas, our potable water usage from Connecticut Water, telephone, health insurance, our employer payroll taxes, life insurance for the, uh, plant staff, unemployment compensation, the pension. Um, and then we get to the debt service. Uh, you notice the first one is, uh, blank for the proposed year, that was for the trickling filter that was put in over twenty years ago and the debt service has paid off on that one.
Yay, we paid it off!
Uh, then going down, it brings us to the, uh, sewer replacement, which was the USDA project where we had done over ten miles of sewer replacement in the downtown area as part of the inflow and infiltration, uh, improvement project or renovation, however you want to look at it. And then it brings us to, uh, debt service for, uh, Rogers Pump Station, which was completed several years ago. And then it brings us to our most recent, um, work at the sewer plant, which was the design and the construction for a facility upgrade, which we completed, um, a couple of years ago. Uh, and the debt issuance costs for any bonds that may be issued, property insurance, workers' compensation and the self-insured, uh, contribution contingency. Okay, uh, next slide, please Jen. I apologize, even with my glasses, I can't see what's on the screen, so I need to refer to my cheat sheets. Uh, then continuing of the expenditures, uh, office supplies, clothing, again, just operating supplies for the facility. Uh, again, new this year is our cost for chemicals, um, that, you know, again, previous years that would have been carried through in professional services with our, uh, contract operator. And, uh, which brings us down to our capital projects. Uh, for this year, we have proposed continued inflow and infiltration, uh, work to identify, uh, some areas and address those, uh, concerns. Work on some various pump stations in town and, uh, some work on our roofs at the facility that were eliminated from the upgrade project due to the increase of costs from the time we were, um, went to design to the time we actually went out to bid. Uh, sewer line replacement, um, to continue, again, for different lines in town, the Prospect Street, Prospect Avenue area, as well as, uh, some problems we've had on River Ridge lately. Uh, you can see that we're funding, uh, some equipment, um, again, at the facility and also putting some money away in our, uh, capital non-recurring account to, uh, build up the piggy bank so we can replace or work on some of the equipment that we've just installed as part of the upgrade. Uh, the grand total of that but, proposed budget is, uh, just under seven point three million, which is an increase from last year, which was a six, a little over six point nine. Uh, the next slide shows a graphical representation of our WPCA expenditures. Uh, basically just, uh, shows a pie chart of all the, uh, line items that we just previously went over. Uh, with debt service being the single, uh, single largest piece of the pie. But if you combine the capital projects and the, uh, CNR fund, it comes up to, uh, a larger share. But if you combine the capital projects and the CNR fund, it comes up to a larger share. And then we come to the, the revenue summary of the proposed budget. Sewer use charges, which again, this year, the WPCA has decided not to have a sewer rate increase. So we're holding the same sewer rates across the board. Our special work for septic receiving is, I don't think it's ever going to come back to what it was in previous years, but it seems to be holding relatively steady. A little bit of use interest on the money in the bank accounts and the different funds. And some anticipated in revenue from liens that may or may not be levied on properties. And sometimes we get miscellaneous revenue from grants or other promotional items that come through from ever source. So the total revenues balance the total expenditures at seven million, two hundred eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollars.
Thank you. I noticed the biggest jump back on first page, the professional services. That drop off was because we took over and we were no longer outsourcing the operation, correct?
Yeah. So when we were contracting, we had everything rolled up into really just one bill. Now, now we're paying for all, everything separately. So our chemicals, our utilities, personnel, benefits, all of that was rolled into one. So that one line item ends up expanding into many line items now that the town has taken over operations.
Thank you. That's correct. Any questions from council?
So I'm just curious with the salaries, Dave. So is the grade four in there? Or will it be like one extra salary?
No, the proposed budget, the first line, the solid, the salary administrative line of two hundred fifty-five thousand is the grade four in the assistant. Yep, that's, that's two positions.
And then I can't remember, what's in your general fund? Do you know?
The, the fund balance?
Fund balance.
I don't remember off the top of my head.
It's about three million. That's after your eight thousand seven?
Yep.
Yes. So for those that are listening, she said three point three to three point five million is in the fund balance after the utilization of the eight hundred. Almost nine hundred thousand that's projected in this budget.
No, that's at the end.
Oh, that's the end. That's the end of the current fiscal year. So then you would deduct the nine hundred thousand from that. So that's why I wanted to kind of make sure we clarified from what Jen was saying in the back of the room, our finance directors in the back of the room.
Any other questions, comments?
After the upgrade, I think everything's, and the town now taking over operations, everything's still going along fine, operations are continuing and no interruptions and no...
Operations are going fine. The plant is in compliance. To begin, I guess it was April tenth, we had some, an electrical surge at the centrifuge building. We lost the two, both centrifuges went down. We had some fuses that were blown, circuit breakers, and we lost two VFDs, one VFD for each centrifuge that controls the bowl. We, Monday, we were back up and running, back online. So for a period of time, we were sending liquid loads out to the MDC as opposed to sending out sludge loads. But at the end of today, we were all caught up as far as the liquid that we had stored in our, in our tanks. So we're back to normal operations. So kudos goes out to the town staff and also working at the plant and also the vendors that came in quickly to get things up and running. I was quite surprised we were able to find the VFDs as quickly as we were.
Just in time for all that rainwater.
Yeah. And we did file an insurance claim on this. And they are, you know, working with the vendors to determine if there is a subrogation claim with this. So we expect that we'll see, you know, some reimbursements from our insurance carrier for those additional costs that the plant incurred for those liquid loads. So we do have a claim that we're working through at this point in time. So hopefully, we're not going to have to hit, you know, operational or their fund balance for the, the excess costs that were unanticipated for this.
Did they, I'm sorry, Jason, did they come up with an idea about what caused it?
It was caused by a power surge. What caused the power surge was still investigating. It seems odd to me that we had a power surge and only went to the centrifuges. But it's, again, that was the cause, what caused that, I, we're trying to determine. I have my suspicions, but at this point, I have no proof. And it could just be faulty VFDs that wore out after two years. But I don't know. Something. I'll keep you posted as I have more information.
That was going to be my question. Mr. Wood?
So just a question on that equipment that did fail. A lot of that stuff was, was any of that under warranty at all?
The electrical components had a one-year warranty. So unfortunately, it was, we were two years, operated for two years. So... But we are looking into prevent, I don't know if you want to say preventive maintenance, but a way to try to anticipate if there are any future problems, whether we do an infrared investigation or a study of the components to see what's recommended by the manufacturers or reviewing with our electrical design team, Wright Pierce, that had done the design of the plants, to make sure that we're not overlooking something that we should be looking at. We have been following the recommendations as far as maintenance and that type of stuff on all the equipment installed. So this is kind of uncharted territory for me. I'm not a big electrical guy. But certainly we're, look, we don't want this to happen again, obviously. I'll keep, again, I'll keep everybody posted as I find out some more information.
Yeah, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any further questions, comments? Anything further for us? I want to thank you for coming here this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the agenda. Next item up is item 6D, consideration and action on a resolution approving the proposed fiscal year Twenty-three, Twenty-four WPCA sewer fund budget. Can I get a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made by Ms. George, seconded by Mr. Cottula. Ms. Clorio, do you have anything you want to add since they just went over this?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add. This is the normal process for the town council. You have the authority to accept as presented or return it back to the WPCA for them to reevaluate and re-present to you. So really, that's what your, your role in action availability is.
Thank you. Just for those of the public who are listening, the proposed sewer fund budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024, they're requesting approval for expenditures of seven million, two hundred eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollars. This represents a decrease of three hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred fifty-one dollars from the current year's budget.
I'm sorry, no, that would be an increase?
Oh.
That's an increase? The current year's budget is six million?
Our resolution says decrease.
Oh, I'm sorry, the, the cover sheet, sorry. Let me look at that again. Has a reduction of debt payment. I'm sorry, an increase. I am sorry. That is an increase. My apologies on the cover letter. Your resolution does not reflect that. If you flip over to the resolution, the resolution does not reflect that. I am sorry. It is an increase, but it does not include any change to the sewer user rates. So the rates will remain the same. They did do an increase in the use of their fund balance to mitigate any of that. So I apologize for my error in my cover letter explanation. Sometimes you look at those things too much and it just fills it in for you.
Yeah. And with it's not a grammatical or sparrowling error, it doesn't jump out at you. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll now move on to the agenda. Item seven, executive session. We have nothing for executive session, so move on to item eight, adjournment.
Sold. I'll second it.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Cottula. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned.